Okay.
Right, then with that, this is Chairman Megan Lally. It is Monday, June 1st at 7:03, and I'm going to call the meeting of the Town of Andover Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission to order. The next item on the agenda is roll call and seating of alternates. So Chairman Megan Lally, myself present. I see Vice Chairman George Elliott is present. Commissioner Ed Smith is present. Commissioner and Planning and Zoning Representative Jed Larson is present. Commissioner Jim Halcy is present, but serving as our wetlands agent for the evening. And then alternate Wayne Thorpe is absent. Are there any additions or changes in order to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll keep the agenda as posted. And we'll move on to item four on the agenda, approval of the minutes. The first item is approval of the-
Excuse me, Megan. I had a problem with my mute switch here. The, Jim, did we want to add a discussion on 84 Bear Swamp Road? Or is that all taken care of?
We think it's taken care of. To this. I did speak to Megan about it. Yes, I think it's taken care of.
Okay.
Sorry, Jim. We'll be addressed.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
I think we can address it under item eight, Agent Report, if needed. Okay. All right, so Agenda Item 4A, May 4th, 2020, Regular Meeting Minutes. The meeting minutes were posted online, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I will say we approve the minute.
Say again, Jed?
I make a motion that we approve the minute.
Okay.
I will second the motion, George Elliott.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion on the floor to approve the May 4th, 2020, Regular Meeting Minutes made by Jed Larson and seconded by Vice Chairman Elliott. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote. We'll do it in roll call order, so I'll vote last. Vice Chairman Elliott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman, or Commissioner Larson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, and I, Chairman Lally, vote aye as well. So the minutes pass approval with a 4-0-0 vote. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the May 9th Special Meeting Minutes. This was a site walk at 12 Webster Lane. Have these been posted on?
So unfortunately, we're actually happened to have a website issue this past week, and I cannot post the meeting minutes and agendas page right now, but I just emailed them to everyone because George did send them to me earlier.
Are you able to share them, screen share them?
Yes. Give me a minute. Okay, so I was able to post them to the Wetlands page. And I am sharing them right now. Can everyone see them?
You can leave them still. We'll take a minute for everyone to review them, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
And this is Jed. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special meeting site walk minutes from Saturday, May 9th.
Do I have a second?
George Elliott, seconding.
Thank you, George. All right, so there's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Larson and seconded by Vice Chairman Elliott to approve the May 9th, 2020 Special Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote by roll call.
Slow, slow, I just noted something there, Megan. I don't see you listed on the regular members present.
Good point.
I recommend that we add you.
I felt it was implied by the fact that Chairman Megan Lally called the meeting to order.
Perhaps for clarification, we can just spell it out under regular members present and repost. Any further discussion? Okay, so hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion to approve the May 9th, 2020 Special Meeting Minutes as presented with the modification that Chairman Lally will be repeated under Item 2, under Regular Members Present. Vice Chairman Elliott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman Larson, how do you vote? I keep saying chairman, I apologize. Commissioner Larson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And I vote aye as well, so the motion carries 4-0-0. Okay, so the minutes from May 9th have been approved as well. We'll move on to item number five on the agenda, public comment. And what's the best way to handle receiving public comment?
Okay, so I will go one by one. Jerry Hardisty?
Yes.
Would you like to participate in public speak?
No, I'm here to talk.
Okay. Kevin Arnison?
I'm all set for now.
All right. Janus?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you, Megan Phillips?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Hank, would you like to participate?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Bill and Donna Phillips?
No comments.
Thank you. John? John, would you like to participate in public speak?
Thank you. No comments.
Okay. Joan?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think that's all.
Hearing no public comment, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is item number six, Permit Applications. And we'll start with application number IWWC 20-21, application by Manuel Correa for 12 Webster Lane, Bolton, Connecticut, a new residential construction in an upwind review area. And there's been some confusion over this application, but we have confirmed final decision that it is a subdivision application. So it was noted in the meeting minutes from our May meeting that it was not. And so just for the record to clarify that it is in fact a subdivision application. I believe we have Jerry Hardisty on the line. Is anyone else on the line representing the application, Jerry? No? Okay. Any further comment that you would like to offer before we begin? Oh, Jerry, you're muted, I apologize.
Jerry, you're unmuted now.
Well, I'm all done. I'm really ready to answer any questions you have. I think it's pretty straightforward. You've seen the proposal. I think it's, like I said, I think it's pretty straightforward. We did go out and stake the location of the house after our special meeting so that you could see more precisely where it's intended. That's all I've got, really.
Can you explain the subdivision element, the final decision? I think you explained it while we were in the field on the site visit, but since it wasn't captured in the minutes, I'm wondering if you could just speak to that.
Well, the property itself is a little over four acres. It can support with the frontage it's got and the property it's got, it can support two building lots. The house that's, that is existing has been refurbished, rebuilt, and, and the owner would like to see if he can get another building lot out of that.
And why was this, the proposed application not considered a free cut?
Because this, this large lot was cut out of a bigger lot once upon a time, right after subdivision regulations came into effect.
Yeah. The commission did receive the materials requested since our May meeting, which included details on the construction order, alternatives considered, and reasons for rejecting notification to the Town of Bolton. And as Jerry mentioned, we conducted a site visit on May 9th. They did this evening, actually. I went out to the site and took some photos to try and capture the locations of the stakes for those that weren't able to go since. And that was a document that I had sent you, Amanda, just prior to the meeting. I don't know if you're able to pull that out?
So I just posted that. Would you like me to share? Okay, can everyone see that?
Oh.
So this is the first photo. It's photo number one in the PDF that was posted. And I took this from the rear of the lot facing towards Webster Road. And the red circles indicate the locations of the flagged stakes that are out in the field. The fourth stake, which you'll see in a minute in the next photo, is just outside of the frame on the left edge of the photo. So just to give some perspective for those that have not been able to visit the property since it's been staked. Any questions on this photo before we move on to the next one? Okay, so if you go to photo two. So this is, I couldn't capture all four stakes. There's sort of a dip, so I wasn't able to get all four in one, in one photo. I apologize, but you can see the one flag that wasn't in the previous photo on this one where my fingers pointing, so it's just slightly outside of the frame there. And then if we keep going to the next photo. So this is moving slightly closer. Still from the rear of the lot facing towards Webster Lane. This is the property edge. And Jerry, I believe this was part of the septic system. Did you stake the corners of the septic system? I had a little confusion out in the field.
No, I put four stakes out there, and they were to represent the corners of the proposed house.
Okay, so this might have been something else, then. So if we go on to photo four. All right, so this is looking, changing direction. So now we're looking with Webster Road to your back facing towards the rear of the property. And I think that was the rearmost stake that I observed. I don't know if you can tell from the photo, Jerry?
Yeah, actually. Megan, I got to admit, I don't remember if I staked that septic system. I may have-
I see a stake right here.
Yes, right. And if that's not one of the four that was originally photographed, then it would represent the, the southern end of the septic system.
I think that was one of the rear house stakes. I think in the previous photo, there, there might have been a stake associated with the septic system. Can you scroll down again, Amanda? So photo five. I was trying to just capture the test pit areas. You can kind of see in the middle of the photo where there's some dug up area. That was the location of the test pits. And then is there one more photo? Okay, and so then this is pretty much from the position of that last photo. Webster Roads at your back, you're facing the rear of the lot. Just showing those are the, I believe, the rear two stakes. That would be the, the back of the residence proposed, just for kind of orientation and perspective. Jerry, does that all seem right from?
Yes, yes, this, this looks correct.
Okay. All right, so I don't know if that's helpful to the commissioners that weren't able to revisit the site since our May 9th visit. Hopefully it is, I apologize if it's not. And I will open the floor to discussion on the application by the commission. The commission have any questions of Mr. Hardisty that haven't been answered yet?
This is Jed, I did not have any other questions.
Thank you, Jed.
George Elliott, no further questions.
No more questions from Smith.
Thank you. If there's no discussion and no further questions, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Chairman Lally, George Elliott, move to approve the application with conditions of a summary motion, which I expect you have prepared.
I have not prepared a summary motion.
Okay. Do you have, well, then, just standard conditions to apply?
I do not. We could postpone a decision until next meeting and request that the agent come up with those materials.
I mean, typically, we do end up amending the permit approval to include any stipulated conditions. If there are none forthcoming, then I will withdraw the motion.
Okay. So I will take that statement to mean your motion is withdrawn?
Correct.
Okay.
This is Jim Halcy. Address a concern I have at this time.
Say that again, Jim, I'm sorry.
I'd like to address a concern that I have.
Absolutely.
I mean, the application seems straightforward, no real problems. But plan has shown it's two lots. And it's, these plans are typically filed in the land records on approval, and the town clerk asked that I sign off on them. And what I'd like, as a condition at this time, as the commission acts, is just to make sure that that plan shows it as both subdivision or in some way notes that it's not, they're not to approve lots. It just, I've seen these in the land records, and they give a false impression. I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Simply asking for notation on the, on the plan to that effect.
Are you saying it doesn't state on the preliminary plan that that's a proposed subdivision? And so you want to make it clear in the record that it is?
Yes. Please.
Amanda, are you able to pull up that map from the application for the commission to look at?
Which document is it in?
I believe it's part of the application. I think it might have been the, the final page of the application. If not, I'm guessing it's that supplemental information page.
Okay, here we are. Just let me know where you would like me to zoom in.
Are you able to just make that your full screen?
It is on my end.
I think if you click the triple dots up right below the X. And then you click where it says zoom, over to the right, the square.
Okay, here we go. Is that better?
Thank you. Yep. So I should note, too, for the commission, on the agenda, the maximum action dates are the standard 65-day window for decision. It doesn't take into account the 90-day extension that's available due to challenges associated with coronavirus. So even though it notes that the commission should be making a decision by June 10th, that's not necessarily true. The commission has an additional 90 days if it needs it to process this application. There is also, I think, I just reminded myself, there's, because we've gone back and forth with the subdivision versus not. Jerry, do you know the final payment that's been made to the town for application fees at this point?
Yes.
You know what the total is that was paid?
325, I think. I made two different payments, so I don't, and they were far apart, so I don't remember exactly.
Because I think we went back to the initial application fee of 360 being due, and I was waiting for confirmation that that had been received by the town, but have not yet received it. I don't know if that's something you have access to, Amanda?
I do not, that would be a Susan thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a number of conversations or exchanges of emails with Jerry on the matter. And to the best of my knowledge, it's taken care of. But, but I don't see checks. So I, I mean, as far as actually coming in on that, but he was certainly, he had asked me for the number, and I'd agreed with him on the number. And 60 sounds right.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Lally?
Yes, Vice Chairman Elliott?
Okay, I have a question for Agent Halcy. That's in reference to his letter of May 6, 2020, addressed to the applicant, Manuel Correa. And call the commission's attention to the information requested in the two, three bullets in the body of the document. And I'm just checking to see if those conditions of application have now been satisfied.
I believe they were in, in the letter dated May 22nd that Mr. Hardisty submitted. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Mr. Hardisty?
I believe we answered those questions, satisfied the requirements, yes.
Yes.
And, and I found a check stub that was dated also the 22nd. That was for the difference in the initial application fee and what we finally determined was the appropriate fee.
Chairman Lally?
Yes, Vice Chairman Elliott?
The letter that you referred to, I believe you said dated May 22nd. I'm not finding that in my materials, what I downloaded from the website.
Amanda, are you able to pull that up?
Okay, so which one was it?
I believe it's that one, yes.
This one? Was it the letter?
Yes, I believe so. Can you click on it? Yes, that's the letter I'm referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no motions on the floor from the commission at this point. I think it would be helpful to see the septic system staked out as well. I thought that was part of the request that had been made during the site visit. I don't know if the rest of the commission feels the same. Anyone would like to offer any feedback one way or another? That would be helpful.
Okay, I think I now have enough information. And again, it would just be for me a question of having the conditions to attach to the approval of the application.
Are you willing to put that in the form of a motion?
No, that's not a motion. It's a motion to it's an evasion of emotion.
I know it's not a motion. I'm asking if you'd be able to make a motion.
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm trying to not make motions, but I will. I will go ahead and make a motion for the commission to consider. I would motion that we postpone decision on the application until our July meeting and request that the location of the septic system be staked out in the field for the commissioners to review. And that Commissioner Halcy, serving as wetland agent, or if we do get another agent on board in the meantime, draft a summary motion with conditions of approval for the commission to consider at our July meeting.
Jed will second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll do my best to reiterate the motion, which is basically postpone decision until our July first meeting. Request that Mr. Hardesty stake out the corners of the septic system in the field for the commission to review before that time. And if you could notify both Jim and myself by email when that's done, so we can pass that on to the commissioners. And then I'll work with Agent Halcy to come up with a summary motion and conditions of approval for the commission to consider. So I will do a vote by roll call. Vice Chairman Elliott, how do you vote?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, how do you vote?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, how do you vote?
Hi.
Thank you. And Chairman Lally, I vote I as well. So the motion carries 400. So we'll revisit this application at our July meeting and hopefully make a decision then, assuming those two requests are carried out. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 6B, application I WWC 20-22, Mr. Janzinski, for a single family residence deconstruction slash demolition in an upland review area at 40 Townsend Road. If we can unmute Mr. Janzinski.
Hello.
Is there anything before we begin discussion, is there anything further that you wish to share with the commission?
Well, the only thing that changed since the last meeting is I met with Agent Halcy. And we took a look at the location and determined where exactly to put in a silt fence for erosion protection, which is going to be pretty much the area that is shown in the site plan that I submitted. I'm not sure if you guys can see.
Amanda, are you able to pull up that plan?
It's in the application. So the only thing that changed is it is going to be a silt fence and pretty much where the Xs are.
Sorry, where did you want me to?
Scroll down.
This one?
This one.
Agent Halcy, do you have an additional comment?
Yes, I did meet with Mr. with the applicant. Sorry, can't pronounce your name, Jen. Jen is.
That's fine.
And the silt fence, yeah, we talked about where that would go and it's pretty much where he showed it on the plan, which wanted a little water a little more by working with the contours. And he corruption sequence is to, I mean, he's taking this down by hand, pretty much. It's gonna have pretty minimal impact. The only potential impact would be we'll have a machine on site towards the end of the process, filling filling the hole, the foundation hole. And I believe in his in his narrative, he indicated that that material is coming from offsite. So there would be no disturbance that would come about as a result of the need for that fill. Pretty cut and dry. And he does have a he has a schedule. He has an incentive to finish by October 1st. When the house is gone, he doesn't have to pay taxes on it. I thought that that's a good incentive to have. That's all I had. And I did discuss with him future plans. And he's undecided as to where the house will go. So clearly, that's another application should should it fall under the purview of the commission. Well aware of that.
Thank you both. Does the commission have any questions at this time? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Do we have a summary motion with conditions prepared for this application?
We do not have a summary motion. We do have the the standard permit conditions that are included in our regulations that we can reference, but no, no special permit conditions have been prepared. I have, I can read if it would be helpful from a previous application that the standard conditions.
I don't necessarily need that. Jim, do you have any other conditions that you would recommend that we put in that?
Oh, I'm comfortable as enforcement agent with the conditions that that in the regulations, the ones that are the standard conditions typically used, yes.
You have a condition regarding the duration of the permit? It can be not less than two years, but not more than five years.
This is Jed. I'll make a motion that we approve the application with the standard conditions of approval.
This is Smith, and I second.
Commissioner Larson, can you clarify in your motion, the duration of the permit?
The duration would be two years.
Do you still second Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the permit as presented with the standard permit commissions for a duration of two years. Is there any discussion? Just to clarify, since I didn't just say it, Commissioner Larson made the motion and it was seconded by Commissioner Smith. And hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote on the motion to approve the application for a two year permit. I'll start with Vice Chairman Elliott. How do you vote? You're not muted, but we could not hear you.
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, how do you vote?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, how do you vote?
Hi.
Thank you. And Chairman Lally, I vote I as well. So the motion carries 400. The permit is approved with standard conditions. Work cannot begin for two weeks to allow time for the public basically to appeal the decision if they want. So Commissioner Halcy, acting as interim agent, will follow up with you and you'll receive a copy of a written permit with those conditions in the mail. The standard conditions are typically that you need to notify the agent 48 hours before commencing any work. He needs to inspect the silt fencing and that needs to be installed prior to commencement of work. Those are really the big, the big two things, but all that will be in writing for you. Do you have any questions of the commission?
Yes, may install the silt fencing prior to the two weeks or do I have to wait the two weeks before I do anything?
No, I think you could install it now. Yeah, it would just need to be inspected closer to make sure it hadn't been compromised in any way during that time.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if there's no further discussion on that application, we'll move on. All right, so the next item on the agenda is application I WWC 20-23. This is a new application that has been submitted since our May meeting for construction of a new residence in an upland review area at 57 Hendy Road. Is the applicant or any of the applicants representatives on the line to present the application to the commission?
Andrew Bushnell, I'm here, I'm the engineer.
Thank you. Can you walk the commission through the proposal?
Sure. So for the record, Andrew Bushnell from Bushnell Associates, I'm the engineer and land surveyor for this project. What we're proposing is the applicant's own two parcels here in Hendy Road. The subject parcel, which is labeled as parcel two, is a presently a vacant lot with just an existing barn structure on it to the west side. And then they also own the parcel known as 57 Hendy Road, which is an existing house.
I'm going to interrupt just one minute. Amanda, can you pull up the site plan? Continue, sorry.
Okay, so as you can see, parcel two is surrounds the 57 Hendy Road site, the existing house site. Kind of a little bit of a unique situation for a lot configuration. But this is the way it's been for many years since before the applicants purchased the property. The proposal is to construct a new single family slab on grade home on the easterly side of the vacant parcel two. As you can see there with its own well, septic system. You can see on the plan, you know, obviously we're bordering the Skunkamuck River. The wetland limit was field delineated by Johnny from Highland Soils and then field located by my company, Bushnell Associates, it maps here. The edge of the river is shown there. The parcel is located in a flood area due to the river. You can see there's the limit of floodway on the map and the limit of the flood zone A, which from the FEMA mapping and the detailed study of the Skunkamuck River was determined by elevation, field shot elevations out there. So the floodway is the area of the that floods that of the river that there's velocity in the water, the river, the flow of the river actually comes up to that point under your storm theoretically based on calculations from the FEMA mapping in the study. The area between the limit of the floodway and the flood zone A is where the water would pond and be stored during a hundred year flood. This project would involve construction in that in that flood zone A area, you know, the area between the floodway and the flood zone A. Flood zone A elevation is 32350. And as you can see, the grade in the proposed area of construction is about a 322. So to construct that house and to protect it from flooding, potential flooding, the house needs to be elevated above the existing grade to accomplish that. Typically, we go a foot above flood elevation. This house, we're going two feet above. There's some information out there that suggests that FEMA is going to at some point revise this flood mapping based on larger rainfall data. You know, the storms are tend to be getting bigger for whatever reason, global warming, whatever. So they're going to raise the rainfall rates on the next revision whenever that occurs, which is going to raise the flood elevation too. So we hope by going two feet rather than one feet, one foot, if the revision does happen, that this house would still be out of harms way of flood and above the new established flood elevation. Now, putting fill in to raise the house and the adjacent grade of the house to protect it from flooding takes away from the flood storage of the flood plain. Or we're putting material into the flood plain area, this taking volume away from the flood plain. So we need to take fill out of another area on the property to make up for that fill, you know, in the proposed house area. So to accomplish that, if you look on the westerly side of the property, you can see a shaded area there. We're proposing to take about 600 yards of material out of that area and transfer it over to the easterly area where the house is going to be constructed. So I guess I should note at this point, the 100 foot regulated area that's marked on the map from the from the, you know, field delineated, field located wetlands. As you can see, the proposed house development activity, septic well, all that is outside of that regulated area. The fill removal to compensate for the fill placement in the house development area, that is that is within a portion of that is within the 100 foot upland review area of the delineated wetlands on the site. As you can, as you can see. So the fill would be taken out and the land sloped back. I was before started, the topsoil would be stripped and stored on site, material taken out, graded, topsoil put back, area reestablished with loam and seed, mulch, silt fence installed on the downhill gradient during during construction. Installation of any tracking pad at the existing driveway entrance that would be used onto this portion of the property to to obtain the fill and to truck it up Hendy Road to the easterly side of the site. The site now where the material is going to be removed from is basically open field area with a few trees here and there scattered. The proposed house area is more of a wooded area on that on that side of the parcel. And if you were to, if you were to extend this out, you would see this where Skunkamuck and the Hop River intersect to the to the west, little ways to the west. It's not on this on the sheet. And you can just catch a portion of the bridge on the on the westerly side of the map where the Hop River comes under under Hendy Road, just to give you an idea where we're at down there with the lay of the land. In general, that's a summary of what the proposal is for you tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. Are you able to speak from an environmental perspective, not a cost perspective? The whether removing material from the western portion of the property versus bringing material in, leaving the western portion untouched and bringing material in from offsite and using and using that to, to raise the, the building area? What the difference might be?
Well, it's not so much that, it's the restriction of building in a floodplain area that you have to, you know, for every yard of material you put into, you fill into a floodplain area, you have to take a yard out somewhere else on the property. So it has to be an even exchange on the, you know, on the property, so not to decrease the flood storage in that floodplain. Because if you were decreasing the flood storage on this lot, you would be affecting lots, other properties potentially up and down the river that would flood more now because you've taken away flood, flood storage area.
Does the commission have any other questions of the applicant?
Chairman Lally?
Yes, Vice Chairman Elliott?
It seems to me that a sidewalk will be in order. Run that by the other commissioners to see if it's agreeable and sort of set a time.
This is Jed. I agree, a site visit would be very helpful.
Commissioner Smith, do you have interest in attending a site visit?
Megan, did you just ask me?
Yes.
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Bushnell, what would your availability be to walk the commission through a site visit? Typically, we do them on a weekend, but it doesn't need to be on a weekend.
The only weekend I have available this month right now is going to be the weekend of the 13th and 14th, I believe. Yeah, yeah.
Does that work for the commission?
It would work for me, George Elliott.
Works for Smith.
Works for Larson.
Are you available, Agent Halassee?
Yes.
I think I usually hear 9:00 AM proposed on a Saturday, so I will propose that we do Saturday, June 13th at 9:00 AM. Are there any objections? Okay, so hearing, okay, so hearing none, we'll plan on meeting at the property. Not recommend parking along the road right there. It's a blind curve for cars coming down Hendy. So I would recommend that if needed, cars could park on Pine Ridge Drive and then walk across to, to meet at the site. But yeah, just, just be careful parking on Hendy Road right there. It's not the best location. So for those that can attend, we'll, we'll set up a, we'll send out an agenda, but plan on Saturday, June 13th at 9:00 AM. And if there's no further discussion, I think we'll, we'll move forward with the agenda.
Megan, this is Jim. Can I just weigh in on this a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I had met with the applicant probably two months ago, and their engineer, and looked at the parcel and went back and tried to determine what regulations would come into play, and it's, there's both zoning regulations and wetlands rig permits here. Although, I am, at this point, I am confused as to the applicability of the town's flood-prone zone. It's very confusing. And I, I want to make the applicant, I wanted to make the applicant aware that there was an issue, and I did. I did in fact have a conversation with, on a, actually several today, and also with Andrew. So just pointing out that there are a whole other set of regulations that come into play. I did forward, or I did make very hard a seat in his capacity as town engineer, aware of the matter, because I'd like his input, town engineer. And also to, to, why don't I like to identify what other permits might be required. Just pointing that out, that hasn't, hasn't taken place. And the other issue is, yes, my understanding is you would determine if it's significant activity and, and also if a public hearing was required. And I'm wondering if you were waiting to do that till after a sidewalk? I just thought, if that's the route you're going, then now would be the time to set it.
So a public hearing, the commission could make the decision to, to schedule one at any time if it felt for the criteria outlined in the regs that it was appropriate to do so. It can also be basically prompted by citizen petition during the next two weeks, since date of receipt. So doesn't really answer your question. I think seeing the property is always helpful in terms of, you know, deciding whether or not it's a significant activity or in the public's best interest. But we don't have to wait until a site visit if the commission felt that it was otherwise, you know, warranted to hold a public hearing. I would say, Mr. Bushnell, based on your conversation so far with Mr. Halassee, do you anticipate the project as presented changing in scope?
I mean, I can't rule out small changes for different reasons, but in general, this is, this is the plan.
I'm wondering if we should wait until next meeting to schedule a site visit and the chance that you all might talk more in between and there's changes that would be relevant to wetlands, or if you, you don't feel that that's likely?
I mean, I don't think that's likely because the, the development of the house and the associated improvements, that's all out of the wetlands regulated area. You know, the only regulated activity as far as wetlands is going to be the fill removal from the, from the westerly side. You know, and I don't, I don't see that changing. Really, that's where the material has to come from. That's the least amount of impact on the wetlands of any going to happen, you know, best place to do it, to have the least amount of impact on the wetlands. So I really, you know, as far as things within the regulated area, I don't see any change.
Okay, so based on that feedback, we'll continue to plan for the scheduled June 13th, 9:00 AM site visit. I'm thinking it's probably going to take a little bit more time than our normal site visits. This is a little bit larger-sized property than some of the, the more recent visits, so just so the commissioners are prepared for that. And trying to think of anything else before we move on. Any other discussion, comments, questions before we move on from this application?
I had, I had one other question, Megan, and that's for Andrew. Did you anticipate? How, how did you anticipate transporting the material from the west side to the east side in this partial?
Just, just using dump trucks in Hendy Road. You know, we have an existing driveway entrance already to the area where the fill is going to come from, and then we'll construct a driveway to the, to the house area on the easterly side.
Okay, thank you.
There was a message that was just received that we, we can park at 57 Hendy Road if there's, there's room in the driveway as well. So there's that. I did actually have a question. I don't know if it's relevant to wetlands, but I did notice there's activity occurring on the property to the west of the existing residence, and I believe it's outside of the, I can't tell from the Skunkamog from the road, but it's, seems to be greater than 200 feet from the Hop River, which, for those that aren't familiar with the property, is pretty much just off the map to the left. Are you able to just provide an update as to what's been going on there?
They just completed a new septic system for the existing house at 57. So I think that's probably what you're seeing. They've been working on it the last few weeks. I know they did, they also did a lot of cleanup in the field there when they purchased this. There was a lot of junk and debris and a car and truck parts and stuff. They cleaned a lot of stuff out of the, out of the field on the westerly side too, did a lot of cleanup down in there. I think they're wrapping that part of it up too.
We have cell phone numbers for Mr. Bushnell and any, the property owner, if they would want to be present in case we need to communicate prior to the visit.
Yes, we do.
Okay, alright, perfect. Okay, so then we'll look at the site on the 13th and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, would, would you like the, the house staked out?
If that's a possibility, that's a good point. Yeah, to the extent that you can provide us visuals in the fields of
Maybe the septic system as well?
Yeah, that, that's always very helpful. So if you have that detail now and it's, it's not problematic, kind of, I don't know if the wetlands flagging is, is still out there, but that's always helpful to see the, you know, the delineation in the field.
Last I knew, it still was.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll move on to item 6D on the agenda under permit applications. This is a new application as well from the town of Andover. It's application IWWC 20-24, and the town is looking to make drainage improvements along Shoddy Mill Road, and I believe town manager Anderson is on the call to present the project to the commission.
That's correct. Megan, you're muted.
Thank you. Would you like Amanda to pull up any documents to help you walk the commission through the application?
First, I'll just give a quick, you know, oral description, and then we can look at the, the, my super crude field sketches and talk you through it. So first, the primary thing we're starting this to do is that on the corner of Wales and Shoddy Mill, we have one failed drainage structure that has been temporarily propped back up, but it needs to be replaced, and it needs to be replaced from the sump on up. The whole thing is bad. The sump is bad, the body's bad, and we didn't put a new top on it. So there's also a pipe that runs under, under Wales Road that connects it to another drainage structure. That pipe is also in pretty rough shape, and the drainage structure on the other side needs to be replaced also. So that part's fairly simple. It's in the town, in the middle of the town road. It's the same as any other drainage. It does not collect drainage directly from a wetlands. The drainage that goes into those two basins comes straight down from the south along Wales Road and enters those two drainage structures. Where it becomes complicated is when it leaves the drainage structure and it kind of goes in a westerly direction, that's where it gets tricky because it runs along, not in a wetlands, but it runs along a wetlands. So if you bring up the sketch, 2024 Shoddy Mill Drainage Sketch. Okay, you'll have to forgive me, I'm a particularly bad drawer. But, but basically what you're looking at is the intersection of Wales and Shoddy. You can see the locations of the two catch basins that we intend to replace and the pipe underneath. Okay, that's right there. So that's relatively simple. The hard part is there's about a 280 stretch along Shoddy Mill Road where the existing pipe that's in the ground is, you know, is in rough shape. It's a perforated metal pipe. Its primary purpose is to gather water that is coming off of Shoddy Mill Ra, Road during rain events and get it to the, an existing culvert that goes under Shoddy Mill Road. Now, that existing culvert's about a 30-inch RCMP or concrete pipe, and there's a little like head wall basin in front of it. So the problem is, is that where, where the pipe comes out, the, where the metal pipe comes out, it just kind of dead ends above that drainage structure. So basically, what we're planning on doing is replacing that whole section of pipe, which is about 280 feet. And before we do that, at the very end, Amanda, can you just slide, go down a little bit? So the goal is to keep at, before we do this project, so we don't end up with sediment into a little intermittent stream and going under Shoddy Mill Road, is to basically create a silt fence and then a barrier out of hay bales and make a temporary sediment basin. This is going to have to be, we're going to first have to start by, by taking about five feet of the existing metal pipe out, so we have enough room to do it. Because the existing metal pipe goes right up to the, you know, the intermittent waterway. So that's the first thing we want to do, is we want to put that structure in place to catch any sediment during construction. And then once that's in place, we'll start with the basins. We'll replace, place the basins and get the roadwork repaired done, and then go down Shoddy Mill Road and basically dig out and replace the existing metal pipe with the plastic pipe. It'll still be a perforated pipe, you know, and run the whole length. Now, if you, the, the problem is, is that there's a fairly short distance between Shoddy Mill Road and the old stone wall that runs alongside there. So what we're proposing to do is basically put a silt fence down the whole length of where the stone wall is, because it kind of, it, the grade slopes down from Shoddy Mill to the stone wall and beyond. And beyond the stone wall on the south side, there is what is clearly wetlands. And so the goal is to prevent any sediment during construction from migrating into the wetlands, you know, and any going, anything coming down the trench from being stopped by the, this sediment basin that's along there. So that's basically what we're trying to do. Any questions from the commission?
Agent Halassee, have you had a chance to look at the project?
Yeah, I actually walked the site with, with Eric and the Public Works Foreman a while back, pretty straightforward. Actually, the stone wall serves as a, as a backup ENS measure. Pretty well contained. I don't see any issues.
Is the Hank that's on the call, Hank Gruner?
That would be me.
Hi, Hank. I'm wondering if you have any comments, given your, your expertise as a, you know, an expert in wetlands, dwelling amphibians and reptiles.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I'd have to take a look at it, but I don't think there's much there from the road running I've done. I mean, that's a pretty intermittent course there. I don't think there's anything breeding in it. I think there's just stuff that's you know, passing through there. I haven't seen any, any breeding activity. I can take a look at it if you'd like.
It's not, not too far out of your way, though.
Right, I could, I could probably jog to it.
Okay, fantastic. Does the commission have any additional questions or discussion?
I have none, George.
Is the commission interested in doing a site visit in association with the project?
I feel familiar enough with the location from my weekly drive-by on the way to the transfer station. I can see what's going on. I don't, I don't think I need a site visit.
This is Jed. I wouldn't mind a site visit, and I can do that
This is Jed. I wouldn't mind a site visit and I can do that independently, or maybe we could do that after we did the, the Hendy Road thing. I think it's always helpful to know and I'm not familiar with this. So that would help me do that.
Smith there, I could do it with Jed privately or also after the Hendy Road on Saturday.
I'm wondering if we couldn't do it before the Hendy Road site visit. I think this one will be a little bit more clear cut. I don't know about the Hendy Road one and I think Eric usually prefers earlier if possible.
Sure, 6:30 AM, 7? Sounds good to me.
My kids are up at 5, I'll see you there.
How about 8:30?
Are you on the 13th, Eric?
Uh, I'll make myself available on the 13th.
Then do we want to schedule a site visit for 8:30 on the 13th?
Sounds good.
And where shall we meet?
I would say just park along Shoddy Mill Road anywhere past the, the intersection of Shoddy Mill and Wales towards the transfer station. Now remember, this is a Saturday, so there will be significant traffic to the transfer station to contend with.
As I recall, there is no parking on the side of the road where the work is being done.
You can park on the side where the, the work is being done. That's where I park when I look at that site.
Eric did submit as part of his application package, multiple photographs of the project location. I don't know if it would be helpful to go through those if the commission would still want to do a site visit after seeing those or not. Amanda, are you able to pull those up?
Okay, so the, the first thing is, the one I'm pointing at is the, the first of the failed culverts. You can see there's a new basin top on it, but the whole structure underneath is shot. And you can see that there's a crack formed directly between that and the other basin. A quick look in there, it looks like the pipe is starting to collapse. I mean, it's certainly nowhere near fully collapsed, but basically the intent is, from, if you look at where my finger is in that one picture and point it across the street, that's the first part that's, you know, that absolutely has to be done, which is the two culverts on the side of the road, or the culvert under the road and the two catch basins, one on each side of the road. I'm pointing from one to the other culvert. Okay, so that's pretty much what's happening at that particular location. And if you look in the lower left-hand corner where you see the car, basically, these two catch basins catch the runoff that primarily comes down the road. Although, one of the basins does have somewhat what appear to be footing drains from the house that drain into it also. So that's pretty much all you can really see from that. And if you go to the next set of pictures, that's where the kind of more important stuff is. Okay, so starting probably on the upper left-hand corner, you can see the stone wall in question. That stone wall, the sediment fence would go just on this side of the stone wall. This is looking at it from the road. And you can see just beyond the stone wall, it is definitely, you know, a wetlands type soil to my untrained and uneducated eye. If you look 1, 2, 3 on the fourth picture, so two down, two to the right, you can see the RCMP or the concrete pipe that goes under Shoddy Mill Road and you can see the old corrugated perforated metal pipe that just sticks out. Because of where it sticks out, there's no real way to put any kind of sediment basin there. So what we're proposing is basically cut that pipe off five or 10 feet back and build the sedimentation basin back, so it doesn't go directly into that, into the water course there. You know, just to minimize whatever sediment we can from, from entering that water course. When I took these pictures, which was about a month ago, it was, there was very definitely water flowing through there. There wasn't really much of anything coming out the metal pipe. But there was definitely water flowing under Shoddy Mill Road from that kind of drainage basin. And that's pretty much it as far as the pictures go. Again, unless you have specific questions. You know, without clearing all the vegetation out along there, it's hard to get a really good look at it and, and show you what, you know, what's actually there.
Okay, so with that information in mind, does the commission still want to hold a site visit? Do you feel it's important for manager Anderson to be there? Thoughts? You are such a talkative bunch.
This is Jed. I would still like to stop by and see it. Eric doesn't necessarily have to be there to support that. I just always think it's helpful to go look at the job site to get a better understanding and make me a smarter guy because of it.
I agree with Jed.
Okay, does anyone feel it's necessary to have a scheduled site visit at which Eric attends?
I do not.
Okay. So I personally agree. I don't think it's necessary. I would encourage the commission to visit the location prior to the next meeting. Is it obvious? Does it need to be marked off for commissioners in the public to see where it is?
Uh, I mean, it seems pretty obvious to me, but that doesn't necessarily, I'm not sure what you would really want marked. The pipe just runs alongside the road. You can see the tops of the two basins, so you can pretty much know where the culvert locations are. And if you walk down to the end, you can see where the end of the metal pipe is. So everything is, I mean, if you want something in particular, stake, they'll stake it, but, but I'm not sure that's gonna provide you anything that, that you can't see by looking.
Okay.
Very straightforward for me too.
Okay, it seems like we're all on the same page that hopefully the public won't have any challenges locating it if they're interested. The commissioners seem confident they can do so, so we will remove the mention of including a site visit on the 13th for this project and we'll, we'll stick with just 9:00 AM at the 57 Hendy Road for that day. And that'll be clear on the agenda that gets posted for that visit.
And if any of your commission members want to walk it during normal business hours too, just let me know. And as long as I know ahead of time, I'll meet you down there and walk you through it.
Okay. And I, I don't imagine there's gonna be a ton of public interest, but I assume that would apply to the public as well, that they could give you a call and meet you out there.
I imagine if the public really wanted to walk it, I would walk it with them.
Fair enough. Okay, all right. So we will revisit this application then at our July meeting if there's no further discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. All right, so let's move on. Item number seven on the agenda is open enforcement items. And we'll pretty much turn this over to Commissioner Halsey, who's serving as interim wetlands agent on these items. We'll start with item A regarding the Townsend Road property owned by Matthew Hagerty that we received quite a while now back, some complaints regarding logging activity in the wetlands.
Okay, spoken that prior previous meeting, and if you may recall, he had surgery. He indicated he would take care of, he did put hay bales up several months ago, I believe. Hay bales that were required as part of the approved plan. And he said in June, he would take care of the removing the fill from wetlands. And we left it at that. I have it, I keep it on the monitoring it in, in June. I, I mean, I will, it's, I will give him a call in a week or two and make sure that he remembers.
Any discussion from the commission?
This is Jed and one of the lessons, I guess, I took away from this particular item is that when we went over and did the site visit with Matt before he started this project, I had a much smaller footprint of land that would be cleared than I see out there today. So when we, we have these site drawings and that and we, we can put down, you know, as best as we can where the clearing would be. He was talking about minimizing the, the footprint to be right up where the house was and all that. And it was just a little more extensive than I was expecting it to be now that it's all done.
Any additional comments or discussion?
Megan?
Yes, Hank.
This is, i- is it okay if I speak?
Yes, you can speak as an expert for the commission.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I only have one concern actually at this point is that since we're, you know, well into the spring season and the breeding season for the amphibians, and I know there are various species that utilize that wetland. I'm a little concerned that actually the method that might be used to remove the fallen trees in there may actually do more damage than just leaving them in place until it's an inactive season, inactive time period. I don't know what, what Mr. Hagerty was planning on, how he was going to remove them, if he was gonna use a skidder or how he was gonna do that.
Agent Halsey, did you have?
I'm not certain how, how he planned to do that.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure the location of the tree. I have not seen, you know, where these are actually in the wetland. You know, it, it may be worth a look just to make sure that we don't just inadvertently do more damage by trying to haul those out of there. I don't know if they're full trees or what's, or just tops or, you know, what the situation is.
I'd be happy to meet you out there and.
Yep, that'd be great.
Do that. I, I can give you a call.
Okay, you have my number?
I don't, but you're gonna give it to me, right?
I am right now. 860-
Do you want to give it publicly Hank, or do you want to do it offline?
It's fine. 860- 712- 1308.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll have you two meet and then decide the best course of action for continuing to.
Thank you.
I will, I will call Hagerty and let him know.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move on to agenda item 7B regarding the notice of violation that was issued to Mr. Grant at 28 Shoddy Mill Road.
Okay, I did speak to Mr. Grant, pretty much. There was some disturbance near the swale along the road and breathing back. And he was very cooperative. He stopped, stopped work. I am scheduled to meet with him tentatively tomorrow afternoon to see what he plans to do, but he wants to do, it sounds like, he indicated he wanted to plant some crops and kind of few dead trees. But I will get a better handle on what he's doing, but he really has ceased with, with the heavy equipment. Or I haven't seen it. I mean, I've been by there a number of times, haven't seen any activity. I think that's pretty much at this.
Any discussion from the commissioner, questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Items 7C and 7D on the agenda are more or less the same violation. We've just been keeping them rated in case it's needed to restrict the comment to one property or the other. I think we can talk about them collectively if you want to give an update on the status of that violation.
Okay, still working with the owner of, oh, trying to get number 41. The owner of 41 Roots 87 to agree construction. In order to do that, construction meeting, the removal of debris. I recall with some fill that went in on her property, on, on their property and on the stream. And I'm, I'm trying to get a certificate of insurance. I'm dealing with contractor in attorney for 4187. Hopefully, I will resolve that very shortly. The other issue is, I did meet with Kurt Bohm, owner of 33, regarding the shed and he indicated he's willing to move it. His, his lot is, there's very little property on the lot that's more than 100 feet away from wet. Very restrictive lot. And he, he brought up the possibility of drop, moving, I mean, this is a portable shed. It can be moved. I mean, it's big, but it's, it's not really anchored to the ground at this point. And he was ordered to, to remove it. And we were discussing options as, if there were any options on the site. And one thought was that he placed, he's not required to, to put frost protection under a shed this size. It falls under the thresholds. Actually place it on the ground. That's something I wanted to discuss with the commission, whether that's a possibility. Meaning that there would be, you know, if there's no disturbance of the, of site other than placement of would it constitute, would it fall under the Wetlands Commission purview?
So can you clarify where it would be placed?
Not at this time, I can, there were, there were a couple of options. There's not a lot of good ones. I can, I can draw them up for next meeting or, and have him draw them up. There is one and I, I think you'd need to see a plan of it and I'd be happy to do that. I did try and, when I met with him last week, I, I provided him with a base map of his property and the idea was that we would come up with some options and kind of working with him on that.
Are there any options? I think you said no, more or less, that they, so all the options it sounds like are along the, the right side of the driveway if you're facing the house from the road?
There's also one in the back. I mean, not much of a back property, but, and if you recall the stream sort of somewhat of a triangular lot. I believe there, there is some, some property, but I mean, it's, it still falls, I think, within 100 feet of wetlands. So the question arises as to whether he could, whether he actually would figure the need for a permit if he simply placed the shed elsewhere.
What are, it, it obviously is kind of separate from, from wetlands, but it might restrict the options. What are the zoning components to this environment there?
There's 25-foot side yards. I mean, he can, he can work with those. What, if I do this, if I bring in a plan? I mean, a sketch of what, what his options are. Were further discussion?
Does the commission have any, any thoughts on that?
George Elliott speaking. I felt that the main issue with the shed was the fact that there was fill associated with its present location. fill associated with its present location and the idea of moving the shed was to, well, get it away from that proximity to the water course, but also to enable equipment to get in to repair and to really put in rickrack or, you know, whatever is, whatever bank improvements were going to be done there, right? But it would be helpful to have a site plan showing where the shed might be relocated. The commission has rejected the idea of simply moving it forward as away from the stream in its present location. So we would have to see some other options for where that shed might go. And I'm looking right now at the aerials that we have from our previous meetings. And as Agent Halcy points out, there just ain't many places where it could go.
What does it entail to move the shed? Do you know in terms of like literally what gets done to move it?
Truck that does it, that's all I know. The gentleman, I believe, the, the guy who delivered it was willing to move it anywhere he had to. That's my understanding.
But I'm wondering if it could be temporarily moved to another location, not necessarily the final location, but to at least allow for the restoration that George is talking about of the stream bank in the meantime.
It could certainly be, I mean, ideally it would be moved once, can certainly be moved for the restoration, but then the, I mean, the question remains as to where it, it goes from there.
Right, I think I'm in the commission's main concern is, is restoring that stream bank as, as George noted and removing the fill from it. I think we're probably less concerned, you know, if it's just going to sit on top of the land somewhere where that is. So I don't know if there's a way to kind of expedite that restoration piece. I guess is what I'm ultimately getting at. Does the commission want Agent Halcy to prepare some drawings regarding options for relocating the shed that we could look at at the next meeting?
I would agree to that.
With the preparing a map of options?
Yes.
And what I'd like to show is how this is going to sit on the ground, how it's not going to disturb soil. Hey, that's, that's what the wetland interested in.
Any other options that you're considering? They wouldn't require any placement of fill or, or otherwise leveling?
That's, that's my understanding. I mean, I'd have to finalize the site and confirm that. So that's something that I've, you know, I mean, there was possibility to put it in the front yard. It would look awful. I mean, it's just visually, it would be drop a shed along in front of the house. It just just wouldn't work.
It's a big shed for a little property. All right, so if you can visually depict what you've been talking about with Mr. Bohm for the commission to look at next meeting, I think that might be helpful. I don't know.
Can do that.
Commissioner Smith or Commissioner Larson, did you have anything to add?
Jim, is the shed on anything, what's it sitting on now? Does it have, you know, the concrete tubes or?
Sitting on, I think six by six. Would, would, like ties, sorry, not ties, they're, they're pressure treated lumber. Six by six, I believe.
Okay, so when you were talking about the frost, whatever, it would be no different than it is right now.
Not really, no, no. When I'm talking about frost protection, what I mean is you're excavating for piers or what, or foundation or something of that nature. And opposed to placing on the ground.
Okay, well, let's revisit this next meeting and then if we can continue to work to try and get the material that was deposited on the forty one side removed in the meantime, that would be helpful, I think, to, to keep this moving along. All right, so that brings us to our final open enforcement item, which is the cease and desist order, which was issued to the Puerto's at one twenty nine Hebron Road. It's complicated. Those of you that are familiar with this, basically it's removal and deposition of a material, but it's associated with a fence that's was being constructed along the perimeter of the property. So Agent Halcy, can you give us an update on that one?
Yeah, as you may recall, the Puerto's were issued cease, cease and desist, I believe in notice to direct or, or they're asked to submit an application basically, or one of the options. And the, I did receive an application and a plan today at five o'clock, thereabouts. I wasn't able to, to get it on, on the website. I will, the, the application actually is, involves a garage with a, with a, an accessory apartment, pool, shed, involves more than, than the trench. Looking at the plan, I haven't edited and there are, there is some concern, considerable concern among the neighbors about that trench being, whether it's on as well. Concerned and it's, there's an opinion that it's not on its property. And the plan that I'm looking at is it shows post trench, all of it as opposed to what's there or, you know, it doesn't exist, but trenches, trenches aren't there. The point being, the, the plan that I have does not definitively answer the question as to whether those trenches are on the property or not. Now, it's something I, I'd rather not get involved. I mean, towns generally don't get involved in, but nonetheless, you will have a plan before you at an upcoming meeting and it will be an issue that certainly arises. I'm trying to think as I speak out how to address that. I know that I, I will have a conversation with the, with the engineer who's Tarbell Hines. He's Hartford, aired the plan. There's also weapons on the plan. And I'm not quite sure who delineated those. That information does not appear to be here. Again, I really haven't reviewed it. And I, I have to apologize, the last, last time this came up, I had provided a letter from a gentleman by the name of Matthew Davidson, who was environmental consultant and he attached, he delineated the wetlands when Puerto's built the addition two years ago or thereabouts. And he provided a map with that. And I looked at it very quickly and I assumed that map was, he had prepared. And as it turned out, it was the, the database from, I think, NRS or state elsewhere. It wasn't, it wasn't his, did not depict his delineation. And I said I would provide that and I realized you've already, you already had it. Now, I do, I did actually have in the file a plan with wetlands from, from the time with wetlands delineated. But again, it was none, it was not clear where, who, who had delineated them, where that information had come from. It was used back in years ago. So I'm trying to sort out those details at this time. And I also have, I mean, there is, there's ongoing complaints about work going on, which I do need to address. Cut, cutting trees in the rear and the trench themselves going in.
So is there, because we did, in discussing it, we had said it was basically outside of the, the commission's jurisdiction, the, the front property line, so.
Right.
We couldn't stop them basically from, you know, doing the work in that area. We didn't have a say in the matter, but it thought was clear that the, the rear of the lot, that the cease and desist did stand for that portion of the property. So you're saying there's continued activity?
I'm not saying it's back. I'm gonna have to do further investigation. I was there Saturday, but I was over on, on Marina Talbot's side, which is hell. And looking around and there appears to be ongoing activity. I did not go over and check between Egner, which is on the downhill side. And I, I have to be there. I do, I mean, I, I do know that there's a lot of concern in the neighborhood and, you know, they would like to be heard at some point. You know, you know that.
Yeah, I'm not sure how how to go about doing that. The wetlands doesn't really kind of offer a great forum for that. I don't know if others have thoughts on that. I think maybe perhaps once an application is submitted, you know, that, that would potentially be an opportunity. There's always, it's always in the public's, you know, ability to submit a petition if they can get signatures from twenty five or more residents over the age of eighteen within a two weeks period for a public hearing on an application. That's always an option. But my understanding from the guidance we've gotten from the lawyers is we're supposed to kind of really limit public comment outside of a, a public hearing. If anyone else, you know, has different thoughts or.
Megan, can't we, can't we hold a public hearing because we anticipate significant public concern?
Yeah, I mean, the, the state statutes and the town regulations, there's, there's kind of this catchall out clause, so if the commission feels that it's in the public's best interest to hold a, a public hearing on an application, it can always do so. So the commission could decide if an application, if any application was presented, that if it feels there's a significant activity, that must hold a public hearing. But if it, you know, it may feel that there's not necessarily a significant activity, but for other reasons, there, it would be in the public's best interest, the commission can make the decision to do so. If the commission didn't, then there's that, that third option for the public to submit a petition within two weeks of data receipt to basically force the commission's hands to hold a public hearing on the, on the matter. Without an application, I mean, you can't hold a public hearing. So I guess we have to kind of wait until we have an application before us to decide whether the commission wants to go that route or not.
Chairman Lully, I believe that, you know, the cease and desist order that we issued did call for an immediate cessation of all activity within a hundred feet of the wetlands. We did specifically state that the wall or fence in the front along Route three sixteen was outside that and outside our jurisdiction. But it seems from Agent Halcy's comments that activity is continuing in the area where it was specifically prohibited. Is that correct?
That was my question and I think Jim's uncertain at this point. I think he's received information that suggested there may be, but hasn't had a chance to investigate.
I, I would need to follow up.
Okay.
Which I can do.
My recollection is the same as what George was just describing, that, you know, we, we made it very clear that they could continue the wall along the roadside of the property, but until they had an application, they weren't supposed to do anything other than that.
That's my understanding as well and we can certainly.
I'm gonna have to get a better handle on what's going on there, quite honestly.
Yeah, we could revisit a letter was sent out after the show cause hearing that should have stated clearly, and I believe it did, you know, what the decision of the commission was, which I believe is what we've just said. Within a hundred feet needed to cease and desist. So yeah, if you can follow up on that, Jim, and perhaps consult with Attorney Brants as needed for, you know, guidance and then we'll revisit it at our next meeting. I think the application, we can, I wouldn't post it online yet. I have to, I have to check into that one, but it can at least be circulated among the commissioners. It'll be received at our, our next meeting. But there's no reason it can't be looked at by the commissioners before then. It just can't be discussed outside of the, the meeting period. So, okay, is there any, any further questions or comments on, on that agenda item?
I, I have a question. I, I pressed, I didn't follow you fully. Can I post this without being, post the material, the application and the plan prior to such time, posted meeting on the town's website prior to acceptance?
I want to check on that piece.
Okay.
Want to post it online. But one, the application fees have to be paid, so I would check with Susan. If the application fees are paid and it's assigned an application number, I think it's, it's okay to circulate it at least among the commission to give us time to review it prior to the next meeting. We always, you know, encourage applications early if possible, to give us time.
Okay, I can, I can circulate it and post it at such time since.
Okay.
We'll, we'll figure that out, right?
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll touch base on the, I have to think who to ask that question, like, when is too soon to post stuff in terms of submission versus data receipt, whether there's a reason it shouldn't go on the town website at this point or if it can. But let's make sure the, the application fees have at least been paid first. Okay, and then number, agenda item E is pretty much a catchall for anything else that Jim wanted to share or new enforcement items that have come up since our last meeting that weren't necessarily on the agenda. Where am I missing? I don't know if you want to speak to, the only one I can think of, Jim, the one off of Hendy Road by the river on the, the opposite side of fifty seven?
Fifty seven Hendy Road, yes. Property that's there was a foundation board two years back and no construction, foundation for a house and a garage board. There's a variety of things going on there. There's material that seemed to be leaving the site down the driveway, flowing both to the river, the Hop River and to Catch Basin to the west, I think. And I just started looking into the matter. I intend to send a after a cease and desist and at least initiate conversation. The owner, find out exactly what's going on at the site. And there's, there was an anti-tracking pad shown on the, on the initial plan and it may have very well been installed, but it's a few years and they, they ended here. But nonetheless, some, in order for that sediment, so the, um, fill that's coming off the site, there has to be some, something, some engineering done. I mean, not necessarily by, by a P E, but somebody's got to figure out where that water's going to flow. An old, older, you know, wasn't created with a plan, subdivision plan by any means. And there's also some zoning issues, I believe, going on there. So what I'd like to do is, is at least issue a cease and desist and go from there.
Amanda, are you able to allow me to share my screen?
Yes, I will make you the co-host right now. And then you should be able to scroll down and see the green arrow.
Does do you want to stop cloud recording?
No.
I think, I think I got it. Here, let's see. Can everyone see a Google Maps aerial imagery?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm just gonna scroll out a little bit. So this is Route six. So this is Route 6 along here, and then this is Hendy Road, just for perspective. So this is 57 Hendy Road, the, the earlier application that we were discussing. But across the other side, this is the Hop River here. Across the other side of the Hop River is, is this parcel, and that's the one that we're talking about at the moment. So I don't know if that's helpful to kind of better understand the location, but as you can see, there's, there was a lot of previous activity on the property, and I think there's a lot of new activity. I had asked Jim to look into it because there's kind of, there's a few catch basins. I don't know if I can pull them out on the map. I think there's one here, and then there might be one or, one or two over here. But basically, there's a, a steady stream of, of sediment leaving this property that's just going into the catch basins consistently, and then presumably into the river. I haven't actually checked where directly they're, they're going, but that would be my guess. And then most recently, all this vegetation here that you can see in the photo, I think all but like a few pieces over here has been cleared. So there's a fair bit of activity underway. Actually, most of the vegetation you see here at this point is, is probably gone. They have goats tend in here. This is a fairly steep slope right here, and there was some erosion control issues. There was a lot of debris leaving the property previously that we had asked them to, and we did install a fence to control that, because I was seeing sheets of insulation and stuff over here on this bank. So it wasn't a well-controlled site. So they did, they did fence here to control large debris from leaving the, the upland construction area, but there's kind of been a, a series of, of small violations that seem to be occurring, and I asked Jim to take a look at it. And I, this never came before the commission. I believe it was an administrative review or approval, I should say, by Agent Valenti previously, and I, I don't recall the details of it. So I had asked Jim to try and pull the file and, and see if he could see, you know, whether there was erosion and sediment controls as part of the approval or, or anything along those lines.
Megan, is there a date on that?
Is there what?
A date?
It says 2020, but nothing more specific than that.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's within the last two years, because the foundations.
Yeah, yeah.
Have to go by.
I don't know if the commission has any questions or comments. None, okay.
It's interesting.
Megan, could I, could I speak?
Sure, go ahead, Hank.
Yeah, just, that is a major area for wood turtles. That I had for many years, just downstream of the Hendy Road Bridge was a significant hibernaculum, I believe even mapped by the Connecticut Deep, along the, the banks there. And I know the turtles use, I wasn't aware there was this much activity down on there. I've been concentrating on other areas on the hop lately. But I'm a little concerned about the activities there. There may need to be some sort of exclusion fencing or so. But I'm concerned about the celtation, but I'm also concerned about potentially excluding turtles from getting, getting whacked over there, being attracted to any disturbance that they might doing for nesting, which will be occurring in the next two weeks.
Okay, Jim, can you follow up? I think you were gonna follow up with Hank anyway.
Yes.
The Hagerty property, maybe if you can follow up on that piece. And, and I apologize, Hank, I don't want to discuss it now because I don't think, yeah, the, the applicant's representative isn't on the call anymore. But I think next meeting, we'll ask for your input on, on the other side of the river. So if you're able to attend the site visit on the 13th, that would be helpful.
Yes, I, I definitely will be there. I wrote it down.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Jim. What was the term you used south of the river? A?
Was a, the hibernaculum, that's a spot, that's a place where they basically overwinter, and there were large concentrations of the turtles overwintering south of that, or, you know, just below the bridge area. They sense have moved, because the, the, there was a, a large tree that had gone down that created a deeper water conditions there. When that blew out on floods several years ago, it dropped the water level there.
Were they going upstream?
No, this was downstream of that. There were some upstream. There were, there were a number of them that were moving from the downstream to the upstream and using that. There's a sandbar there, and they were also using, they were actually nesting in the field there to the right on the east side. Yep. And they were using those embankments because of the openness. And when you mentioned the issue of the cleared vegetation, that got me thinking, you know, there could be some potential impacts to the, you know, because they're, they're tight to those areas.
We'll have you guys follow up then. And Jim, I would say feel free to proceed, you know, accordingly, in, in the meantime, before we meet again, based on Hank's guidance.
Okay.
All right. We have a second public comment period on the agenda, on item number nine. I don't know if there's any public left on the, the call to comment.
I have one question.
Sure, Kevin, go ahead.
Since it's been clarified that 12 Webster Lane is in fact a subdivision, will there be a public hearing for that?
So the subdivision piece is separate from the wetlands piece. My understanding, and Commissioner Larson sits on both wetlands and planning and zoning for this reason. My understanding is that the applicant, the wetlands applicant has not submitted a planning and zoning application yet, because they wanted to see whether or not wetlands would approve before going the P and Z route. So we look at it kind of as though the subdivision had been approved. We basically look at the project as it's been proposed and try and assess the impacts, the wetlands and water course, and whether or not they can be mitigated or avoided. So we could make an approval. That doesn't mean it's going to be approved as a subdivision, so it still has to go through that process. And I don't know if, I could turn it over to Jed to speak to that, that piece of the puzzle if it did go into a P and Z application.
And, and so to have a further subdivision approval, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but that does require that we have a public hearing.
Absolutely, yes. It sounds like a re-subdivision. Yes. By our, a subdivision is required by our regulations.
Right.
I'm sorry, a public hearing is required for subdivision by our regulations. It's not required by statute.
When you say our, you mean the town?
Yes, it's not required by state statute. It's required by the town of Andover subdivision.
So normally, an applicant, they have to apply to wetlands first, and usually the applicant will apply to us and then immediately to P and Z after. And then the public hearing would potentially address both commissions. In this case, since we don't have a P and Z application, it's a little bit clunky, because the, the wetlands commission might decide to make a decision without a public hearing, and then it could go to P and Z and then need to go to a public hearing. Or wetlands could decide to have a public hearing, and then it could go to P and Z, and then potentially need a second public hearing. So it's, there's a lot of potentials right now? That answers your question well?
No, it does. I was just curious. You know, I was just, I was wondering if there would be one, and then if there, there is a regulation that I wanted to bring up, and I was just wondering, so it's in the Andover Master Subdivision Regulations? And I was just wondering if that would be involved with a planning and zoning meeting, or if that would be something that would be brought up at wetlands? Because it does, does take into account sanitary waste within 100 feet of a wetlands. So I just didn't know if that would be handled by this commission, or if that would be handled by planning and zoning.
No, so that would be handled by planning and zoning. I mean, we, our, our town ordinance design is commissioned, so we have a P and Z rep on it to try basically to avoid unnecessary work. You know, we don't want to approve something that is known that it's going to go before P and Z and just fail. So we try and prevent that and wasting people's time essentially. But since there's no P and Z application, we don't really have P and Z feedback on this one, so we have to just strictly look at it from wetlands and, and make our decision. They would need, because there was a subject system involved, they would need health district approval as well. So there is the potential to that, you know, on an application, wetlands could approve it as presented, and if they don't have that health district approval yet, they could go to the health district. The district could say, no, we need you to modify your application this way, and then they would need to come back before wetlands for a modification approval. So there's a, a lot of different paths an application can take in, in these situations, because there are multiple commissions involved. Yeah. So I don't, I don't, I think it's safe to say at this point that wetlands will not hold a public hearing on it, based on what I've heard this evening. I, I haven't heard any commissioners speak up to state that they thought it was in the public's best interest or otherwise a significant activity.
Megan, if I, if I could just add, this is Jim, just add one issue here is, both of the lots front in Bolton, and the Andover, and Z will have to coordinate the approval process. I don't know exactly how this, how this is going to work. There's a lot of unknowns at this point, but there's no application before us.
Has, has the town done that before?
Yes.
Okay, so there is, it's precedent to go on.
No, in Coventry. I don't, but I wasn't involved in that. I don't know how that was handled, other than driveway. I've been here.
I want to be careful about not discussing that application without the applicant or the representative present, but just to talk procedurally, those are, those are kind of options that can happen. Okay, so is there any additional public comment? Okay, so hearing then, we can move on to item 10 on the agenda, other business, the first item of which is commission vacancies. We do have two alternate vacancies presently, so continue to think of people that might be interested in serving. You know, it's always great if someone has a, you know, relevant professional background, but it's not a requirement. So, and young professionals that are looking for experience, I, I can't imagine jobs are, you know, going to be flush in, in the upcoming months, so this is certainly a great opportunity if you know anybody that's pursuing, you know, environmental science, engineering, town planning, anything along those lines. You know, encourage them, they do need to be an Andover resident. I had one person express interest, but they, they didn't live in town, so they, they weren't eligible. Anyone have any names they would like to suggest?
I regret.
Okay. We'll continue to try and, you know, think of ways to find people to join us, because we are, we're slim pickings. But that kind of leads into item 10B on the agenda regarding a wetlands enforcement officer. We do have an interview scheduled for next week, I believe. So if we are able to hire someone else to serve in the, in the agent position, then that would free Jim back up to serve as a commissioner again, which I think would be really helpful to the commission, so that all five of us could serve as, you know, being stuck in a position where if someone has to recuse themselves, we don't have a quorum to vote anymore, which has been challenging the last few meetings. So as part of, I want to kind of wrap it into, we are still actually recruiting for an agent. I think we're gonna do a, a rolling interview and hiring process, and Amanda, chime in if this is incorrect. So if you know of someone that would be interested or qualified, please encourage them to still apply. And then hopefully, as soon as we find a qualified candidate, we'll bring them on board, so we have someone to help us. In the meantime, this, we talked about it the last two meetings, but we didn't have enough commissioners to vote on it. I did complete the, the state training. If the commission would like, you can decide to authorize me to make decisions in the upland review area, so that they don't need to come before the commission if they're not likely to be a significant activity. So, I don't know if the commission would like to discuss that at this time.
I would move to authorize Chairman Lally to make such decisions as we authorized by her training and our permission in regard to upland review.
Jed will second.
So I recuse myself from voting, but just for procedure. So the motion is made by Vice Chairman Elliott and seconded by Commissioner Larson for the commission to authorize me as a duly authorized agent to make only approvals in the upland review area. So by state statute, I would have completed the training, so I'm eligible, I would only be able to make approvals within the 100 or 200 foot, depending on the, the water body or water, well, question, upland review area that are not going to be a significant activity, and then the commission can choose to restrict it further. Other towns have limited it, so it's only particular types of activities, or they'd said, you know, it can't include commercial activity, it can't include activities that involve a property upgrade or than a certain acreage. So I would encourage you to discuss whether or not you want to consider any restrictions along those lines. Do everything.
Well, I guess my thoughts are, I know that you have with the environment at heart, Megan, and you would, you would always forward something to the commission that you thought was questionable in your mind on whether or not you should do it. I'm very comfortable that you would take the right approach there. And so I don't feel that we would need to put any additional restrictions on that. Hopefully, it would make your life easier, not harder, because it would take some of the, the commission work off. When you, when you're the very knowledgeable person on that and can, and, you know, say, yep, in this case, we don't need to send it to the commission, I'll sign it off and it's done, and we go on our merry way.
I agree with Jed.
And again, given the size of Andover and the kinds of activities that we're typically looking at, I don't see any particular need to restrict it to one sort of activity or another. You know, the kinds of examples you gave, Chairman Lally, don't really seem to be germane. So I would agree that we don't need to impose any further restrictions.
It's want to make it clear, so if I, if you make the decision, if you vote to approve the motion, typically the commission can't overturn that motion, the public can appeal it, but in doing so, you're basically granting that authority to me. And if, if I, I make a decision that you, you know, feel you would have handled differently, it does remove that element from the commission. I see it as an opportunity really more for building permits that come through that might be within an upland review area, but just really clearly don't have any potential for wetlands impact. You know, your garage additions, decks, things like that, that I don't think we need to be holding up people's projects, you know, just for procedure. So that, that's really where I think I would be more helpful. I think anything larger in scope, I would, I would bring before the commission.
All right.
So I guess if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Vice Chairman Elliott, how do you vote? Thank you, Chairman Larson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And Chairman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chairman Lally, I'll recuse myself from voting. So the motion carries 301. I will serve as a duly authorized agent for the commission to make decisions in the upland review area as needed. And I will provide you with a monthly report of any such approvals at the, the next meeting. And I think, I believe it's also required that we post legal notice within a certain timeframe, so I'll familiarize myself with that and make sure that, you know, the town is following any required procedures regarding that. Anything else? Anything else the commission would like to discuss before we adjourn?
Megan, you said those positions were volunteer, did you?
The, the commissioner, so the agent position is paid. We're hiring right now for a 10-hour-a-week agent position, and that should be posted online. And then the, the commissioner positions, those are volunteer. And I would encourage you to consider applying, given your background, if you have any interest. Or if you know anyone.
I will give it some consideration.
Yeah, we have, we have one alternate serving right now, but he, he basically lives out of state at this point. So I mean, I think we could, we definitely have room for two additions to the commission and I think potentially a third if, if someone was interested. But yeah, if you are interested or you know somebody else in the community that, you know, would be interested, definitely encourage them to submit. But it doesn't need to be a formal, you know, CV or resume, just a, a letter of interest and general background, I think is sufficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Megan, the letter, would you submit it to the town clerk? Is that, is that accurate?
This has come up before, and I, I don't wanna misspeak. I believe it states in the charter who ultimately the Board of Selectmen makes the decision. So I think the way it goes is basically, what I would recommend would be submitting it to myself, the town clerk, and the Board of Selectmen. And then I think the commission would basically vet the candidates and tell the Board of Selectmen whether they feel that they would recommend approving them or not. And then it would be the, the Board of Selectmen's decision whether or not to actually do so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion to adjourn made by George Elliott at 9:15 and seconded by Commissioner Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion carries 400 with all commissioners participating voting aye. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.